Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. Bill number 24-0542, rezoning 3701 to 3733 to Wanda Avenue. We will also hear bill number 24-0501, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1833 West Lexington Street. And finally, we will hear bill number 24-0498, rezoning 3014 to 3030 Darby Street East, 3021 to 3039 Elm Avenue, 800 to 810 Darby Street South, north side of Darby Street South adjacent 810 East, 3002 3012 Darby Street East, and 3003 to 3019 Elm Avenue. In attendance today, the committee members that we have here are John Bullock of the Ninth District, Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District, and Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District, and myself. We have a quorum. That's it with other council members. And Representative for the Office of the President, we have Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director for Legislation, in the back here. And Representative of the Mayor's Office, we have Tyler Chanelle with Government Relations. So let's begin with bill number 24-0542, rezoning 3701 to 3733 to Wanda Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 3701 to 3733 to Wanda Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R6 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. This bill was introduced on May 16, 2024. This bill was sponsored by yours truly, Vice President Middleton. We'll start with agency reports, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, we approved this bill for form and legal sufficiency, but I note that there were no findings of fact in the planning report when I reviewed it, so they need to be found today.
Okay. We'll get those finding of facts verbally talked about. And we'll get that once we finish the other reports. Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz, DOT has no objection to the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we respectfully request a favorable report on City Council Bill 240542.
Thank you. They deferred to planning, but we'll go ahead and move on to Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development, we stand behind our favorable bill report.
Did you get one in writing from them? Okay. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Dave Garza for the BDC. We stand by our report, favorable, Council Bill 24-0542.
Thank you. And the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the committee. Eric Tissot for the Planning Commission. They reviewed this bill in their public meeting on June 20, and they adopted the findings of fact that were offered in the meeting by the applicants. I just realized earlier today, prepping for the hearing, that I didn't scan that with our report. If you don't have that in your file, I can send that to you electronically, just so that you'll have that. Just give me a quick second.
Yes.
But they did adopt those findings and recommended approval.
Thank you. And then I want to go back just to verbally verify the BMZA deferring to planning.
Yes, Madam Chair. Tyler Chanelle from the Mayor's Office. BMZA defers to planning.
Thank you. And before I check to see if any committee members have any comments, I just want to say that this is a process that has been going for some while, for really a long time in the Park Heights community. The historic Gillis Memorial Church, right there on Park Heights Avenue, owns this property and have really been working hard to get this housing apartment complex moving for older adults, add it with some other amenities that I'm going to give them time to talk about when we get to public testimony. So at this point, are there any questions from the committee? And having none, we'll go ahead and move to public testimony. And is there a list? And I do see a representative, as he's getting the, Tony is getting to check the list. So I do see a representative from Gillis, along with Al Berry, and I'll let you go ahead and start. Press that button on your right.
Okay. Can you hear me?
There you go.
All right. Al Berry, the associates here on behalf of Gillis, along with Carla Jackson, who will be giving some brief remarks, and then Alicia Corson from Bon Secours. As Councilwoman mentioned, this has been a long-time project, working with the Department of Housing and Community Development, which has, which awarded this property, which was acquired and cleared a number of years ago. Property was awarded to Gillis for a mixed-use, very innovative housing program. It's innovative. I'll let Carla sort of talk about that. It might be the first one in the country. But because it's a mixed-use building that's going to involve a health center, it was important to have a zoning that allowed that. And so while C1 presented some initial difficulties to both Planning Department and the Housing Department, since the city is selling the property, there can be conditions put on that, on that to ultimately, through the land disposition agreement, that would mitigate those, if not eliminate, those concerns. So it's unusual to have, and it really is a sort of a commercial desert in that part of Park Heights Avenue that doesn't allow for mixed use. We think this is innovative in and of itself. We present, we prepared findings of fact, which I believe the committee has, Planning Commission adopted, and we're here to answer any questions. And maybe before, unless you have any questions of me, maybe Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Good afternoon, everyone. Wanted to start off with saying this thought I saw this morning that actually works for me. And it's by Dr. Alicia Reed. She's a licensed physician, sorry, pharmacist. And she shared this thought. "Life has its way of throwing unexpected challenges and losses our way, and it's during those tough times that we learn who we really are." The question on the table is, why is Gillis Memorial CDC building a grandfamily housing with wellness center? Well, I'm here to tell you why we're trying to do it. Not trying, why we're going to do it. So first, let me start off with this. As I'm sharing with you, if I say great-grandparents, think of not just grandparents, but aunts and uncles and older siblings. When I mention grandchildren, think not just of grandchildren, but think of nieces, nephews, sisters, and brothers. So those will be interchangeable when I use those two words. Now, do you know, or have you known grandparents who have cared or who are caring for grandchildren without their parents in the home? Think about that for a moment. Did you have to think long about it? Can you connect with someone? I can. My Aunt Sheila was that person. She raised her grandchildren just because their parent was unable to do so. And I pause for a second to say that there are various reasons as to why parents are not in the home. It might be because of death. It could be because of illness. It could be because of drug addiction, incarceration. There's, there are many reasons why. Now, think about this. Your grandparent and you're living in a special senior, or not special, but a senior living development. And in the senior living development, most of you already know that there are restrictions on that. But then a phone call comes, or a door and a knock happens, and at that particular time, you find out that your grandchildren do not have a place to live because the parent is no longer available. At that very moment, the grandparent is contemplating where to move. Not just where to move, but whether to move at all. Or can I afford to move? And do I have to start all over again? Those are questions that they have to now answer, ask themselves because of the situation that they're actually in. And sometimes, you have to think, if all of that is rushing at you, it's mind-boggling, for sure. The news throws that person into an array of emotions. Those emotions could be, why me? Shock, frustration, guilt, fear, anger, depression. Under the circumstances, it's all understandable. And then now, suppose you're not in senior housing, but you still have grandchildren. And instead of the senior housing, you are now living in a one-bedroom apartment. But then you get the phone call, or you get the door and the knock, the knocked door, and the same scenario happens. And that is, do I move out of the one-bedroom apartment because now I have my grandkids? Can I afford to move? Do I have to start this all over again? And what about the children? What are they feeling? Abandoned? It's my fault? Where am I going to go? Who's going to take care of me? All of those emotions are happening. And what I want to share with you is that Gillis is hearing, seeing, knowing, and experiencing some, if not all, of those stories. And what we want to do is to put ourselves in a position where no grandparent has to worry about where to live because we now have the grandfamily apartments. Then let's move a little bit further. Why I have a wellness center? After reviewing the data in the Park Heights Master Plan, because that's really where we started, we noted that the history has been that quite a few members within the community actually use the hospital as their emergency room, or the emergency room as their primary care physician. So along with the grandfamily apartments, we want our residents, as well as the community, to have access to their own personal primary care physician and for the children to have their own pediatrician, just like most of us in this room. The Wellness Center is where the primary care physician and the pediatrician will follow their patients by monitoring and helping their patients maintain their health, providing preventive care, which includes annual checkups, blood tests, immunization, health screenings, diagnosing and managing acute conditions, just like what we have when we go to the doctor. It also will talk about, or the doctors will also share, ways of promoting healthy lifestyles, making referrals to specialists when needed, just like us. We firmly believe that not just some, but all the neighbors in the Park Heights community deserve this, and the Wellness Center will provide that. We've been in the neighborhood since 1969. That's 55 years plus. And we have done some great things in the community. We've read the Master Plan, as I shared with you before, and we see how people are struggling, and we want to be there for them. So bringing this to a close, I want to share this with you. The grandfamily apartments with the Wellness Center is addressing six vision-focused areas in the Master Plan for Park Heights. Community of physical and social well-being, community character, community opportunity, healthy community, safe and affordable housing, and last but not least, cleanliness and orderliness. All of the components, the targets, right in this one place. And so I'll start, or I'll end where I started. "Life has its way of throwing unexpected challenges and losses our way. It's during those tough times that we learn who we really are." Thank you so much for your time. Thank you. And thank you, Carla, for taking your time to come down and share your enthusiasm with what's about to take place on that side of the community of Park Heights. And I just want to add for the committee, just to kind of, so you know, I guess, where it's positioned. It's really in walking distance from the Tuanda Rec Center, which was renovated. And now there, the mayor just did a groundbreaking for the aquatic side of the Rec Center, which is going to be such a great transformation for that end of the, of the community, which really has been kind of neglected for a while. A lot of concentration has been on the other side of Park Heights Avenue, and it's kind of like a forgotten area. So to have this new idea of the grandfamily apartments and just including that health aspect, particularly for older adults, is just going to be a great example of what can happen in other places around as we go through redevelopment around our entire city. So looking forward to the building and groundbreaking for that piece of land. And on that note, is there a motion to move the bill favorable?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos and seconded by Bullock. Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock is a yes. Conway absent. Dorsey absent. Glover absent. Ramos is a yes. And Stokes is a yes. This bill will move favorable at the next council meeting, along with the finding of facts. Thank you. Next, the committee will hear bill number 24-0501, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1833 West Lexington Street for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1833 West Lexington Street, block 0178, lot 017, as outlined on red in the accompanying plat, granting certain variances from off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March 4, 2024. The bill is sponsored by Councilmember Bullock. Comments from the sponsor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Vice President, I'll say that I've had numerous conversations with the applicant. The proposal is accepted and favored by community members, and so I look for favorable disposition. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietra for the Baltimore City Law Department. We approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority. We stand by our bill report, which is favorable.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Tyler Chanelle, Mayor's Office. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights stands by this bill report.
Thank you. Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz, DOT. We have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright here, representing DHCD. We stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. The Baltimore City Fire Department.
Again, Tyler Chanelle from the Mayor's Office. The Fire Department stands by their bill report.
Thank you. And the BMZA.
Same thing. BMZA stands by their bill report.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Madam Chair, we stand by our report. No objection.
Thank you. And the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the committee. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting on April 18. And in looking into the background of the property, it looks like there was a use permit that had been filed in 2008. Unsure why, city records had this as just a single-family dwelling, but the applicant says that the building has been two units ever since that time. So this bill really will serve to legalize that use. There is variance required for one parking space. It's included in the bill. Obviously, it's been previously two units. Nothing will actually change. So again, it's just confirming legalizing this use, and the Planning Commission recommends favorable.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee? Moving forward, we're checking for public testimony. There is no public testimony. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second. Seconded by Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock is a yes. Conway, Dorsey, Glover absent. Ramos is a yes. Stokes is a yes. And this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear the final bill for today, bill number 24-0498, rezoning 3014 to 3030 Darby Street East, 3021 to 3039 Elm Avenue, 800 to 810 Darby Street South, north side Darby Street South adjacent to 810 East, 3002, 3012 Darby Street East, and 3003 to 3019 Elm Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 3014, 3030 Darby Street East, 3021 to 3039 Elm Avenue, 800, 810 Darby Street South, Darby side, north side Darby Street South adjacent 810, 3002, 3012 Darby Street East, and 3003 to 3019 Elm Avenue, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R7 zoning district to the R8 zoning district and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on February 26, 2024, and sponsored by Councilmember Ramos. Councilmember Ramos, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know the title is a bit of a mouthful. There's a lot going on there, and I really appreciate everybody's time on this. So I want to give you a little bit of background of what has happened here. My constituent, who's in the room to answer any questions if we need, approached the zoning board last year around this time to get a variance to add in addition to his house, another 10, 12 feet to his house. The other residents in this two-block area had, lots of them had already gotten variances to be able to have extensions on their house. However, my constituent, Mr. Brewer, was denied the variance because the zoning board had changed how they are making decisions on variances, as I think we're all very familiar with what has happened there. And so looked through to figure out the best way to help him, but also, you know, help the others in this, you know, it's a little horseshoe area. You'll see there's a map in the packet in the Hampden community. And so I thought we should rezon it. And so what we ended up doing was, in an R7 zoning district currently in the code, it allows for, it calls for only 50% of the lot area to be covered by building. Okay? And what the residents had already done, many of them through the variance process, have gotten extensions to be able to have the lot area, or the lot area be covered by 60% of the building, which is what an R8 does, an R8 zoning. And so it made sense to go ahead and rezone that entire three, two-block area to an R8 for the residents who currently already have extensions to be, not, no longer be in non-conformance. Right? And also to allow for my constituent, as well as others, maybe two or three more that are left in that area, to be able to have that 10-foot extension. Right? And that, you know, the criteria for everything else relative to R7 and R8 are pretty much the same, but that was the difference, was the coverage of the lot area. So that is what we are doing today. We are rezoning this, you know, two-block area to go from R7 to R8 to allow for 60% of the lot area to be covered by building, which puts everybody in that block, in that area into conformance with the zoning code and allows for my constituent to add that extension. The, I just want to say that as we've been having these conversations around the variances, one of the things that keeps coming up is whether or not people who are asking for variances are going to be asking relative to uniqueness. Right? And this building is not unique. It's the same as every, all of the other buildings. So he would not have been able to qualify for a variance under the uniqueness standard. So I think what this does is it benefits, you know, the, oh, let me just add one other thing, is that this, changing from R7 to R8, R8 does exist in the rest of the neighborhood. So there's some parts of the neighborhood that are R7, some parts of the neighborhood that are R6, and some parts of the neighborhood that are R8. The parts of the neighborhood that are already R8 are similar to the conditions of this particular set of properties. And so it is consistent with what we're trying to do here. You'll see in my testimony that I had talked about the findings being around the mistake standard for rezoning. In conversations with the Lot Department, and you'll see in the Lot Department's report that what they'd like us to do is approve this as a comprehensive rezoning because this, this did not come from my constituent. This is filed by me, in my office. And so that we don't need to have the uniqueness versus neighborhood change standard, we can simply say we're making it consistent with what's already in the code, and that is a comprehensive rezoning. And the Lot Department will, will explain that a little bit. So anyway, that's the long way of saying, this was my way of addressing what the zoning board has been doing, which I think was their original intent, by not having just variances happen haphazardly if there was no, no opposition, but to really think through what's really in the code? And do we need to make changes? I mean, we could have, I could have, you know, changed the code to have different lot sizes and totally reshuffle that, you know? We could have had that conversation. But what we're just trying to do here is put everybody in that part of the neighborhood in conformance with the zoning code, which would benefit my constituent, but also benefit the other neighborhoods. So I know that was a long description, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good explanation. Thank you for that. And does the committee have any questions? Yes, Councilman Stokes.
Councilwoman, is, my only question is, was this missed when we did the rezoning? Because I know that happened all over the city. Is this part of the new rezoning code? Because I only using that over an old gout so they did that, and it missed some of the zoning code. And we were able to open up more restaurants there because when we did the rezoning, it was missed. So that was my question. Was that part of it too?
I think it did come up after the fact.
It definitely came up after the fact It definitely came up after the fact as an issue, um, relative to the, the creation of transform. Um, but it also came up, uh, it, it came up because, um, the, the variance was denied by the, by the BMZA in their quest to make sure that they're following the letter of the law. Um, so yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? And I just, I'm, we're gonna, I'm gonna go straight first to the Planning Commission since we're kind of having conversations. And, um, Eric, how does this, how does this differ from that other bill that's out? And with the fifth district council person?
Um, well, um, in part, it'll make things a lot easier. So hopefully that'll come to a voting session sometime soon. Um, so encouraging.
But is that a similar situation to this?
Well, those are global fixes to the code. So, uh, I agree and endorse with everything this lead sponsor has talked about, you know, this, this neighborhood, uh, was kept R7, some other parts went to R6 slightly less than, some went to R8. Uh, it's a bit of a judgment call at the time. Uh, just a little bit of fun fact, uh, before 1971, when the prior code was adopted, there were actually two maps. One was a bulk, uh, and, and height map, and one was a use map. So depending on the Venn diagrams of how they lined up over time, when the 1971 zoning code hit and it became a more modern Euclidean-style zoning code, trying to put everything into one district, you had to kind of pick and choose how to retroactively fit existing development into the zoning districts that were set out. Some fit better, some didn't. R8 in this case will fit better. It's right-sized in the neighborhood, and so that's why the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I can just add to, uh, what, um, Mr. Chiso is saying.
Yes.
Um, the purpose of, um, my constituents adding, um, a, an addition, uh, was, you know, various families have their own, um, needs. My constituent specifically, um, needed more room because his parents are moving in. Okay? So it's a similar situation as what we've, uh, talked about in other, um, in other hearings. Um, however, uh, the bill that is before us from my colleague, my constituent would not be able to get a variance out of that bill because it is not unique. And so, huh? Are you taking the uniqueness out?
Yeah, sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Uh, yeah, removing uniqueness is one of the functions of that bill, which would actually help in this case, uh, but is on a global scale, uh, because uniqueness, you're right, with row homes, you know, you got 20 in a row. What's unique? It's been tough to, to meet that standard, uh, so that softens that quite a bit. So that's why, I know, I'm looking forward to a day where we hopefully have that change.
We'll continue to have, yes, that is, that other bill is scheduled.
Right, but I think we want to, um, be clear that what we're trying to do here is meet the needs of the families that are, um, asking for extensions, um, as opposed to, um, just increasing property values. Like, we really are trying to meet the needs, which is the whole purpose of the, of what we're trying to do here. So, um, anyway, but I just wanted to add that.
And we want to be careful of approving things that might be harmful in the future.
Right.
Um, Councilman Stokes.
My question is, I'm getting bored of that, Madam Vice President, because I felt like it was getting way votes, uh, for something that was the same kind of bill. But just, could you explain it so the public know the difference? Because you said it was much easier, so people understand it a little bit more because the other bill is before us, you said, is a little different. But could you explain it so it be, public people know exactly the difference in the bill?
Sure. So the bill that's before you today covers a greater block, right? And it'll, uh, rezone those properties from R7 to R8. Uh, some of them that are non-conforming, and I, I'm standing in today for my colleague, uh, Marie, um, Sweeney Anderson, um, who couldn't be here today. She did the background study. I don't recall what percentage of properties, uh, but there are several that will become conforming, meaning they meet all of the requirements of the district as R8, but they won't as R7. Even the ones that won't will be closer, right? So that's the right sizing that we're talking about for this neighborhood. So there may be some of these properties that conform that may not need variances going forward for simple additions because the new R8 zoning will meet their needs. So that's the fundamental fix that's happening for these properties. Now, zooming out to the city as a whole, um, the problem that we're finding is that uniqueness standard, and the city's been challenged on it at least once, if not a couple times, uh, where opponents to a variance had a, uh, a challenge, saying, well, wait a minute, you didn't demonstrate that this variance that the board granted met the uniqueness test, which is a tremendously difficult standard to meet. Um, so by removing that uniqueness requirement, softening that language, uh, it allows us to, in essence, operate the way we've been for decades. Um, you have to have a good reason, there has to be some general standards, but that uniqueness bar that is so difficult to cross, uh, won't be a requirement, and that'll be citywide.
Thank you. Oops, thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Moving on to checking for public testimony. And let me go back, I'm moving ahead, the other agency reports. City Solicitor?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Elena DePietro for the City Law Department. Um, if I could, I'll explain a little bit more about the, um, the method that we're going to use to rezone in this case. Um, there were, there are two ways to rezone property. You can do piecemeal rezoning or comprehensive rezoning, and piecemeal rezonings are usually just one property, and they're initiated by the, the homeowner, the property owner, for the purposes of, of that property alone. In this case, we have 42 properties that are, um, and the petitioner is the Councilwoman who represents them, and this is typical of a, of a, um, comprehensive rezoning. Um, the criteria for comprehensive rezoning are initiated by a city government, um, based on considerations of the common needs of people who live in that area and involved in considerable number of properties. In this case, there's 42 properties. Um, it's designed to control and direct the use of the land and structures according to the present and future needs of the people who live there, which would, um, be consistent with the, what planning has said about the, the uses that they see happening in the future here. And it is a project, product of careful consideration and extensive study by Planning Department and reviewed by the Planning Commission. So all those criteria are met, and, um, it is a more appropriate way to rezone this property because you don't have to make findings of fact when it's a comprehensive rezoning, and that gives you more leeway, um, to say that this is the appropriate way to, um, zone this property.
Thank you for those additional details. Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Christmas Age Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Transportation?
Luciana, the SDOT. We have no objection to the bill. Thank you.
Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BDC?
Madam Chair, Dave Garza for BDC. We stand by our report, favorable.
And the BMZA?
Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office. The BMZA stands by their report.
Thank you. And, uh, again, checking for public testimony, and we have none. Is there a motion to move the bill? So moved by Stokes, seconded by Bullock. Uh, Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock is a yes. Um, Conway, Dorsey, and Glover absent. Ramos is a yes, and Stokes is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting, and this hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.